Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. We need a motion to reconvene, open session. Thank you. Colin, favor. Very good. Can't see a thing on my... I did something awful to my screen. Okay. Let's stand together and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Completely lost it now. All right. We...I don't believe we have anybody signed up in the back, correct? For visitors. But we do have a visitor this evening that is kind of far away right now. It was a tradition when I taught sixth grade to Skype with Scott Redenhour and the kids when they made their trip to Washington DC. So, we're going to continue that tradition this evening, I hope. Technology, you know, is a wonderful thing when it works like it's supposed to. And there...I know they did a practice, right? And so, he's been on standby. And according to what he told me the other day, they are going to be on the top of the Kennedy Center, on the rooftops. And hopefully, we're going to have a very unique view of Washington DC. So, we'll see. He knows we're trying to make contact, right? I feel like the mothership is trying to contact. You know? But we'll see how it goes. I just thought it would be fun to do that.
There he is.
Good evening.
Hi. Hi, girls.
So, I've got Alexis Hawn and Riley Husky with me. Did you guys hear us okay?
Yes.
Absolutely.
They probably can't see.
So, these two young ladies were two of the ones that laid the wreath and we'll let them kind of talk about that. You can ask them questions about their day. So, nothing to go.
It was...yeah, it was amazing.
So, what do you...
Huge honor. Big ceremony, right? In front of lots of people.
Lots of people?
There were a lot of people.
There was a lot of people, yeah.
What did you think of the guards and how they changed the...
The walk.
What did you think of the guards and how they interacted with you as opposed to what you thought they were going to be mean or...
They were really nice.
Yeah, they weren't as like serious as like they are when they're like on duty.
What's been your favorite part of the trip so far?
Laying the wreath.
Yeah, I'd have to say that too.
Did it make you cry?
Didn't make you cry.
I was...I was close.
It just hits home and makes it seem a little more serious when you're there.
It does make it seem a little bit more serious when you're there.
It does, yeah.
Um, they ate at a really cool restaurant today.
Oh.
So, what did you eat?
Ben's Chili Bowl.
It was so good.
What was special about it?
Um, they had the...what was it called?
Half smoked.
Half smoked dog.
It was delicious. And that's one of the most popular places to eat in Washington DC. A lot of famous people have eaten there.
For example, who?
Uh, Barack Obama.
Okay.
Uh, Bruno Mars.
That was Presley's guitar player.
Guitar player, yeah.
Martin Luther King?
Yeah, Martin Luther King.
So...
Have you guys seen the Lincoln Memorial yet?
Have you seen the Lincoln Memorial yet?
Yeah, it was great.
It was really cool.
Were you able to see it at night? Were you able to see it at night?
Yeah.
Yes. Can you do me a favor? Can you tell Mrs. Mann that her dog Baxter is doing very well at one time?
Can you tell Mrs. Mann her dog is doing very well?
What river is that right behind you?
Say it again?
What river is right behind you? I guess it's the Potomac?
Oh, the Potomac.
All right.
Potomac. So, there's the Potomac.
We lost you.
We only see...
The Pentagon is right behind you.
The Pentagon is right there.
Hold on, we lost...hang on, we didn't see anything. We just see Mr. Redenhour's picture.
That is a desk.
Sorry, that's a scary thing to see.
Yes, it is. At least it's not your ear.
True, true story.
Okay, so where's the Pentagon?
Can you see now?
Yes.
Air Force Memorial's over there.
Hang on, give us just a second. You gotta look at it down from now. Washington, Jefferson, Lincoln.
Plane.
Plane's taking off. Okay, tell them what that...what's the fire's off in the day?
That's the Air Force Memorial.
Air Force Memorial. Anything else you guys want to say to them before we close out?
I'm having a wonderful time.
Yeah.
Greatest trip ever.
I wanted to say thank you for Mr. Redenhour and Ms. Marchetti.
Thank you.
Did you get much sleep last night?
Did we sleep last night? Yes, we slept in a great hotel last night.
Very pleasant, very pleasant.
Great hotel.
Very nice.
So, very good. And we're going to turn it around so you can...
There.
Everybody's got their own charm.
Hi, Paris.
Hey.
Everybody's waving. So, we're at the Kennedy Center for Performing Arts checking it out.
Cool. All right. Well, thank you for sharing, Mr. Redenhour, and we hope that your trip is very exciting and continues to be a fun time. We'll look forward to it.
We're having a great time. Thanks for the opportunity.
We'll look forward to your safe return.
Sounds good. We do too.
Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Right. I didn't know that. So, um, he wanted to share a little bit about some of the things that... They prepped the kids before they left and kind of helped prepare them and do little mini lessons and historical things. So, he had something he...another video he wanted to share with us. Oh, it has to do with the tomb, I guess. And they had to get dressed up to participate. And they prepped them before they walked down with the wreath. And I remember the first time I went, the kids were really nervous to do that, so...
Was that the end of it?
Yeah. Because I don't think...I guess they didn't get to do any more.
I'm not sure.
It's interesting. But one of the cool things is they do that all day long. They lay those wreaths and you get to see all of the wreaths that...
That's cool.
They end up lining up kind of behind the tomb. So, it's a really...a really cool trip for those kids. They learned so much. And we've talked about how it brings all their history lessons to life.
I went with my son.
And it really is a fun, fun thing.
You know, the guards that run...are on the Honor Guard, they take an oath to never curse.
Right.
Drink alcohol or smoke for the rest of their life.
It's a big honor to get to be one of those sentries.
That's pretty cool.
Okay. So, I don't believe we have any other visitors for this evening. So, that moves us down to the items by consent on the consent agenda. So, you had minutes. And I believe you were also given another...a loose leaf page of minutes in case you didn't notice. But it was from June 18th. And so, it's on a little sheet of paper. So, if you didn't get to look at those, you might want to take a moment. They weren't included in the packet when you originally got it. Okay, I need a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the items. Consent agenda is presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Are there any items that need to be discussed? You have questions? I thought we already did that. When we amended the agenda. Anything else on the consent agenda? Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of approving it, raise your hand. All right, very good. Motion carries. All right, so that will take us into reports. We'll start with Dr. Korman's report.
All right. Uh, thank you. On the superintendent's report, the first update that we have is for construction. Uh, I'm going to kind of skip over that just for a little bit and let Roy come up and share some information in a moment. I did want to point out a couple of things. If you scroll on down to the Legislative Bulletin for the School Administrators Coalition, I just want you to take some time, if you have not, read through House Bill 1606, which is a large education omnibus bill. And basically, the omnibus means they take everything and throw it on the bus and run it through legislative practice. So, take that time to read that. Some of those things do not directly impact districts. Some do. Some don't make sense. You know, like Senate Bill 681. Uh, it says that special needs students will be required to receive instruction in Braille reading as part of his or her IEP unless the IEP team determines that instruction in Braille or the use of Braille is not appropriate for the child. Well, that's what you do in the IEP anyway. If a kid needs that, you write it in there. If they don't, you don't put it in there. So, just another sense of legislation that is pushed through that you have to pay a little bit of attention to. And also, I wanted to point out, if you scroll on down to House Bill 1744, it's A-plus schools modification, House Bill 1744. Uh, and it was introduced by Representative Jim Hansen. In essence, it says it modifies the A-plus schools program by removing the requirement that the student attendance of a high school in the state be three years immediately or consecutive prior to graduation. So, that just means as long as you attend high school in the state, you will be eligible for A-plus, of course, and graduate. Uh, I think there was one other I wanted to point out toward the bottom. The corporate income tax. If you remember, that's one thing Mrs. Gensel's bringing up. That's Senate Bill 884. Uh, that's something to keep an eye on. You know, that...how that's going to impact school finance. And really, that's the only ones I wanted to point out specifically. But please take time to read through those and see what's passed. And there is also a section that is what has not passed. So, just an FYI for your information. All right, in the updates at the very top of the initial document of the superintendent's report, you see that I listed that... We have Roy here to come in, mark images, and give us an update. I shared some information with Ray. Uh, I was down there several times this week, visiting with the architects, visiting with Roy, Ray. We did some site visits. Ray and I went down. Was it yesterday, Ray?
Yes.
Yesterday, we went down to evaluate a wall issue that we had. And anyway, as I shared with you previously, we've had some change orders crop up. And I'd like to turn it over to Roy to share with you a little bit about what's going on.
I've just got to put together a quick document for you guys just to give you an idea of the summary of the change orders that we have had to date. Want to kind of remind everybody, as we started this project and started working with you guys, reminding you that, you know, as this process went through, we bid the project out. The project was bid to multiple contractors. On bid day, we had a contractor submit a bid, so everything worked out well for us there. There were some minor modifications that we got last minute on the set of documents that the contractors needed to have them look at post-bid. The other things that we had post-bid were the comments from the fire marshal and building plan reviewer. When they finalized their review process, we received that information, updated our documents. It was at a timing of the bid process that it was right at the end, so we weren't able to get that in the bid itself. Uh, so we issued that again as a post-bid addendum. Two things could happen once that process or that review process from the city occurs. One, you could delay the project and get those prices in the bids. Or we do what we've done as a post-bid addendum and got those bid by the successful contractor. What that allowed us to do was to get the project moving. Because as you all know, we were very, very tight on timing to get this stuff, all this work, done by August. And so, that's what we've done. That's what the majority of the extra costs are. Some of the other costs that are in there are some optional costs that we asked the contractor for on your behalf in trying to enhance or make the project a better project. And again, those are optional items. Again, the first page, if you want to just look at one, for example. In the computer lab at the junior high, it was requested to see what it would cost to put some countertops in around the perimeter of the room in lieu of utilizing the tables that they currently use that they wheel in and push up against the wall. Uh, again, that was a bid alternate as we were doing that project. So, when the project came in under budget, we said, hey, what would it cost to do that? And so, that's what some of those optional costs are on the right-hand side over there. If you're looking at the document, the blue column that you see in there are more of the required items that we need to do for the code official comments that we had from them. Uh, some of them, as we got the project going, we were looking at, we needed to probably add a couple of extra windows in some of the other doors, some of the other glass. Ray indicated that you would like to see those tempered. So, we've got a few of those other costs incorporated into the project. As we continue this process, I'll still continue to bring to you ideas. If things look like they need to be or will enhance or make the project a better project, we'll be able to give you guys, you know, an idea of some of the costs or options there. Uh, it's just construction and the way construction works to keep projects moving on such a timeframe that we have that we're trying to do and meet at the end of the school or at the beginning of the school. I can certainly run through these if you feel like you want to. I can answer any questions. I just...I don't know how in-depth you want to get into these or have any questions, Mark.
So, what would you, as a board, prefer? Would you like to go through them?
Well, I think it's great since we did go...you know, we were still under budget, right? We still had this wiggle room. We're not anywhere near reaching that.
No.
With these numbers.
Yeah.
But you're just saying they could be a lot more.
They're...well, in the beginning of the project is where you see them most, okay? Because they're in there destroying the place to put it all back together. So, that's when we really start to see the most of the change orders. And that's why, you know, you do get a longer list in the beginning. As the project continues, it's construction up, okay? Meaning that they're putting things back together. Those things are already on the drawings. We shouldn't be seeing any changes other than, again, things that we may see you want to have to be benefit to the project. Those are what we would call owner change orders if you request us to look at doing something a little different. But other than that, the majority of the changes occur in the beginnings of the projects. And yes, the dollar amount that's included in here is maybe 25, 30% of the contingency that we had built into the project. So, by no means have we expended the contingency that we had set up.
But we do have some of that set aside. Like, for example, the soil we're going to have to take care of down at the junior high.
Yes.
Off that science hallway. We forgot to deal with that, so that's about 150,000.
Yes.
So, we're...
We do have some things, like you mentioned, that are coming up that I still think will fall somewhere, you know, within some of that contingency money. Again, we are...and let me reset. I meant to tell you about this before. The construct...the change orders that we have received from Brock Miller, the dollars that you see on here are straight off of their change orders. I go through each of the change orders kind of with a fine-tooth comb and challenge them on the pricing on some things. I've already found some items that, number one, we didn't get credit back on. Number two, we think that they've taken too long and, you know, they've estimated too many hours, so I'll challenge those. So, these prices will do nothing but go down slightly, okay? So, I am looking at those. I just wanted to make sure that you understood where we were at the point. We are in the process of going through those back and forth, and then we'll finalize on the final cost of those. But we do have a few additional costs of the rock coming up that we do know about.
At the junior high, right?
At the junior high. On the backside where the element...where the gymnasium addition is going in, we are hitting some rock where the footings and foundations go. So, they had to bust out bedrock coming around that corner. Those are things that I mentioned in the...before that are contingency items. We have unit costs for those built into the contract, so they can't double their price all of a sudden. We have them locked in already. So, what we just do is we take the quantities of the rock, multiply it times the unit cost, and then we know what that price will be. So, it's a fair equitable situation when we get to that point.
On that one, you're talking about the junior high, but that's not on this...
It's not because they're not finished with it yet.
And then the one with the elementary? What was the unsuitable soil? Was that rock too or...
No, that was actually unsuitable soil itself. So, when they got to digging the footings and foundations, we have PSI, which is our soils engineer. They went out, tested the soil, and found that the soil was real...
Sandy.
Sandy. It was...you didn't want to build a building on it. It would fall in. So, they had to dig out three feet of the existing soil and put back engineered fill so that we had a good foundation to sit on.
That was pricey.
Yeah, again. But again, we were able to control the cost on that too by having those unit costs that we built into the project from day one and double-check the quantities and stuff. So, you know, it was a bigger cost, but again, it would be...it could have been worse. You know, we could have had it gone down four feet or five feet. But in that big footprint, that's what needed to be done for that project.
So, Roy, Ray, and I were at the primary on Tuesday, Ray, or Wednesday? We looked at the wall on Tuesday. We went back down on Wednesday.
We went on Wednesday.
Went back down Wednesday. Okay, so I guess it was on Tuesday that Colin and I were at the junior high and at the elementary. And as I was through reading that, I had a couple of questions on... First, let me start back at the primary. The question on that split-faced block and that glazing.
Yes, the glazed block.
Are we having...I know they're talking a six-week out in order to get that block in.
Yes.
And we were talking about trying to go back with some maybe drywall temporarily. And Don, it's Don down there, right? Don had a plan of taking a brick, hacking that brick and sticking it in there and then coming back later with the glaze and slot it in when it's ready.
Right.
Is that feasible? Have you talked to them about that?
We have. We've talked to them. And actually, our committee just went back to the office and we hit the drawing board again. Because...and what we've tried to do, and this is one of the things, Doc, I'd like to talk to you after the meeting.
Sure.
Is we've come up with a design that we think will work much better for virtually no cost difference.
Okay.
And what it'll allow them to do is not wait for that block to be delivered, and we're able to get that constructed.
Right. And I think we need to include Dr. Wallace and Ray in that conversation.
Which we can, right.
Kind of get their input on that. And down at the elementary, one of the questions was, it seems like the elementary is going quicker than the other two.
Yes.
Do we project it that way? Or is it because rain delays slowed down the primary or the bar at the primary, the rock at the junior high? Is that kind of...
Each project has a life of its own, as you can imagine. In the elementary, the superintendent...and it also depends on the superintendent on the job. Brock Miller has three very good superintendents, okay? Each size school has different amounts of work. The superintendent for this particular school was able to get a good jump on that back classroom addition and get that going with the soils and the footings and the foundations and got lucky with his weather, okay? And it started to come out of the ground. The other two projects had more work to do to prep the ground in the area before they could come out. Then they hit some bad weather, so they had a few delays and that. So, it was all timing and everything else. But the superintendent at the elementary, his work is pretty contained and concise. He's able to really get a lot done with his crew. And it works...it's working very well. His goal is to try to get, you know, that whole front addition done for opening the school. Now, again, we said that that may not happen, but he's trying, so...
Yeah, because he asked me where the secretaries go. And I said, right out there, so you better get it on the roof. The last question I have is at the elementary when I was with Colin. And I think Ray brought this up. And also, the electrician, not Coleman. Who is their electrician there?
It's nice.
Which one?
The electrician at the elementary.
Elementary, that would be...that elementary.
Is it Saturday?
This is mine. Now, they're doing the junior high. That's on mine. That'd be Florida. That'd be mine.
Well, the question I have was, when we walked into it, was the old office.
Yes.
As soon as you turn immediately to the right, there's a refrigerator supposed to be there or going to be there.
Okay.
The wall ends, and it's just going to have the receptacle and showing. And they asked me about finishing that wall as well as the other couple of walls, right? Ray, finishing those out because there were going to be three receptacles around there. Is that in these change orders?
Yeah, we do have...we do have some of the fir...what we call that is furring out a wall.
Furring out a wall, yes.
When a project is designed...when a project is designed, we do the best we can without destroying your building to see what's going on behind it. You can imagine that, okay? And so, there are a couple of areas. Once the demo part has been completed, that we look at it and we say, you know what we need to do to make the end product the best it can be is take and put some...a couple of studs in front and fur that out with some drywall to allow some electrical outlets and a couple of other things get put in place. And so, then we ask them for, hey, what would it cost to take that wall and sheath it in drywall and make it nicer than the existing condition that it's there? Okay? So, we've got a couple of those prices in. I talked to them today. There is two more small amounts. And they're in that $600 to, you know, $1,100 costs, depending on how much...how length of the wall it is. So, we're not looking at $20,000 or $30,000. It's minor costs that we would do. In the end, you guys would benefit highly by the final product when we just start to do some of those. But those types of things, we can't see with a crystal ball, and we do that in renovation work. It's very common that we have to add a few furred walls here and there. But that's what you're talking about is we get to those areas and it would be better than doing exposed wire mold on an existing facility if you have a brain to place. And that's what we're trying to control for you on that.
All right. Okay. I have a couple of questions. I understand the required changes that have to be in the blue column.
Correct.
It's the green...the optional green figures. That's about...if I did the math right, haha. I'm going to round. It's about $35,000.
Roughly, yes.
Okay. And are those more cosmetic or are they kind of functional?
Most of them are functional. I'll tell you that. Uh, like, for instance, the countertops in the computer lab.
Sure.
By putting those in, it allows your maintenance people to clean under them and allows a permanent situation for the computers to be on. They're not on tables, so you guys get that. Some of the other ones are some additional, um, uh, cabinetry that are going in some of the classrooms to help with the Chromebook locations and plugging in and stuff like that, that we didn't put in the original scope of work, because we all assumed we were very tight on budget, and so therefore, we said, well, well, hold on, if we got extra money, let's take a look at it at that time. This is that time, and that's why we're looking at some of those options.
And could you refresh my memory as to how much extra money the contingency fund, or whatever it is that we have, that, our wiggle room?
Yeah, and Doc, I don't know if you've got updated numbers or anything, but when we, when we kind of put your program budget together, if you guys remember this, this sheet here that we did for you before.
Right.
I mean, I was, I was in excess of, um, you know, $600,000 in contingency that we had set aside for things just like this. And like you said, if we add this up, you're in that 190s.
Yeah.
You know, with all things in, right. And so, again, but with Doc saying that, hey, we still have rock to do, I, I'm not looking to use it all up, by no means. I, I, I wanna be able to, at the end of the job, say, guys, look, if you got this left over, let's try another project. Okay, that was the goal from the beginning.
So, my thought though is, are there optional items that we might want to wait before we decide? Or is this one, is it your recommendation then just to do these for now? You said most of our big change orders come at the beginning.
Yeah.
And I see, I mean, there were lots of required things that had to be done.
Yeah.
And I get that.
My recommendation on the ones that we ask the contractors for would be to, to move forward with those. I think they're a betterment to your project in a good, positive fashion. Because, again, I think down the road, you're gonna want them later.
Sure.
And they're gonna cost you more, okay? So I, I, I really think, well, the contractors are on board, they're in there doing their things.
Right.
They're ordering stuff, it all comes out the same, I, I really think that's a good idea.
Well, I'm, I guess it's, well, I would hate to see the price increase if we wait.
Right.
Because now they're in it. If they have to come back.
Exactly. There's disruption, there's additional cost, there's mobilization, so it's, now's the time, and again, I'll be checking the numbers and verifying that we're getting a fair market value for this, okay?
So the rock issue, how much, do you have a, a guesstimate on that yet?
I would say it's, I don't, okay? I'm just estimating based on what we had for the soil, okay? So it's just a pure estimate.
I know, sure.
It's probably.
That's why I said guesstimate.
Yeah, in that, in that 75, maybe 100 at the most, I, I would think. Now, it depends on the type of rock in the trench, because trench rock is more expensive than dirt, okay? Because they gotta sit there with a jackhammer and go pop, 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 pop. So, we're, we're trying to get quantities on that. I'm sure by the next meeting, we should have that taken care of, as they have with those footings and foundations still.
Well, I just don't wanna chip away at our wiggle room too soon.
I, I, I really think with, given that rock being really the last major item that we're gonna, that I foresee us having, uh, I think we're, we're, we're still pretty safe with our contingency.
I just have a question, it's just more curiosity than anything. Under the elementary, you have, um, under COP 6, the 06?
Uh-huh.
What's PLAM Shelby?
Sorry.
I just don't know what it is.
That's a, that's a, no, no, it's not, actually. It's plastic laminate, is what it stands for. P-L-A-M, it's a, I'm sorry, it's an industry slang that I get too used to typing in my world, and I forget that who I'm delivering stuff to, but it's, it's like the, it's like the.
You're gonna take that as a slang.
No, 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 I didn't mean it that way. I'm just, I'm saying, we got, you know, how tech has their language that none of us understand.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have some things that, it's plastic laminate, it's like the countertops or something in there. Okay, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions about this? This is something that we will be addressing in new business in a little bit. We will vote on the changes, on the change order.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So are you finished with your?
Yes, ma'am, I'm complete. Thank you.
Okay, Director Bess, we'll do facilities and grounds then. I feel like we kind of did that in a little, in a way, but, but maybe not.
Think about it. Good evening. Um, the elements of positive mill after we just got done talking about construction, because we're still gonna need positive construction. Um, it looks like we've got one good benefit to this that we're gonna love to hear, the alternate bid that we had sitting out there in case we need it, was to open the floor up at the bottom of the elementary to get the sewer line all the way outside. We don't have to do it.
Yay.
Um, so, there's some money we saved, okay?
How much did we save then?
Roy's spending.
You're just gonna spend it.
Hundred fifty.
We are. Not all in one place.
Is that gonna affect the rock issue?
Uh, no, no, we didn't put that much in there for it, but, uh, you know, it is a good saving, so we don't have to open the floor, we don't have to open another classroom up, mess up that area. Uh, was like, it was earning the custodial pause until we just messed up their rooms, so that's okay.
Oh, wow.
We'll put them back together later. But, um, it, that, that's always great news. Some other good news in the construction world, uh, bleachers are about two-thirds maybe together now, uh, at the junior high. They will probably be attaching to the wall on next Tuesday, um, and then that'll be the finished product. Um, we won't have a wall painter behind it because there's too much dust, uh, plus they don't have the AEC system now. Um, so we're gonna wait a little longer before we do a little painting with that looking nice. Uh, but it is gonna be ready to go, we sanded the floor behind it, because if you can imagine, the old one sits there and they had all that foil and stuff that kind of makes a big gap. Uh, but we had to sand the floor down on that, so that's kind of, kind of prepped already before we get ready to do the whole floor later next year. Um, but it's gone really well for that part, um, so that's good news for us. The other part news on the playground thing that they'll back to elementary, we did get the $4,000 slide in, free slide, I should say now. So, uh, did, did come in, so hopefully, and, I don't know, hopefully it will be. When school starts up, we'll have the whole new playground all put together back there for the kids in the elementary again, so. That'll put us all back together, the kids will love us for that too as well, I'm sure. Summer school, I think, is going very well, two buildings, the administration, the staff's on outstanding jobs. Um, for the intermediate, being the first year they've done, as well as the learning centers, it went pretty good, actually, so, pretty proud of them. So, we're in the last couple of days, and, uh, then we can start our projects for the summer, getting the rooms all done and, and everything. We had started some of them already, of course, and everything, because we can't wait till the last minute. Junior high's on one step base, they're holding middle hallway down, as you know, they've got first hallway and third hallway, four up, so they're going down the middle, uh, going in between rooms, luckily they join each other. Um, and the elementary's actually done well, they got the east wing on the bottom floor all done, and they got the top floor will be done, oh, sorry, about the first, top floor done, bottom floor will be done by Tuesday. And they'll be in the north side, which will be kind of picky a little bit, just because construction guys are running through there a little bit. But they're still doing a great job getting it all finished out too, so, for buildings moving toward a park. Uh, primary is about the same way, they got the little horseshoe in the first wings for the, uh, for the, for the second and first graders. Uh, they're doing really good getting those done. They're behind the fire doors, so they can control a little bit of the dust flow, so they're still doing great too. So we're, we're staying on top of, uh, for clean purposes, so, um, asbestos reports, uh, good news on the elementary, it's all gone.
Yay.
Um, so we can continue, and they made good progress since they've got that out of the bathrooms and the on, and where the overhangs were, that's in your ceiling outside, um, that is asbestos as well, that's all been abated. Uh, should be good, we shouldn't find any more, uh, but we got all the walls, like Roy said, all, most of the demos all done, so most of all the walls have been opened up. Now, ceiling's been opened up, we should be good, uh, shouldn't be any more asbestos, so no more testing. Um, the ones at the primary on asbestos, because you have to do asbestos testing on VCTs, which is turbinol fluorine, uh, that all came out negative when they did that, so they were able to just keep going. And the reason why we had to test that one, so you'll know, is anytime you run into a floor and has a black substance underneath it, underneath your VCTs, it's usually asbestos related. So, um, fortunately, for some reason, I'm not sure why they have a black glue under it, but it's not asbestos, so at least that's good news for future references, as we, if we ever had to do open floors or change from tile, or from carpet to tile, we'll know that, that building's safe. So, good news on that part. Um, while I, we were doing construction and following up on that, and Dr. Foreman has, and I walk the areas pretty well, a few times a week, and some weeks seems like every day, but, um, we do do a weekly report, um, and everything, we put it together, and we do a lot of pictures. Uh, we have people in the building to take lots of pictures, and I go around taking lots of pictures, either the miners do it on Saturday, because can't be in the way of the construction guys too much, as you know, and, you know, so you gotta follow the rules there, so, um, we are going to show you a short clip of just some pictures we've done so far, and later on, it's changed a lot since then already, because there's a lot of framework done, um, the buildings are looking awesome, so, I hope this'll be okay, so. I'm not great at this program, so, so you know. Best technology world, but, cross the line there.
It's a big movement, right?
That's it. We got to the bar. So, a lot more fun, yeah.
Before, I do have one question.
Sure.
I know, I don't want to give you any more, but remember when you guys painted outside of the intermediate, the stripes on those?
Yes, we'll be redoing all this.
You will? Okay, good, because that really did help.
They are paint programs that starts up Monday with summer school coming out, there's a number of rooms that have to be painted outside as we go.
All right. I just want the stripes on the, you know what I'm talking about, okay? Thanks.
They will be.
I do want to share whoever posts all the construction pictures on Facebook for the primary, junior high, high.
That's administration.
I have to tell you, I have had so much feedback on that, parents love seeing it, so thank you.
They've all had.
It's been wonderful.
Correct. Any questions? All right, we'll keep you all posted, so.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you for vacation. This is okay. The long and the proud. Okay, we'll move on to technology. And, um, can't you go? Sorry. And thank you for being part of our little fun exhibition exhibit, whatever. That was fun, thank you.
Um, we've had 83 completed work orders. Um, active directory, we're in our final stages getting Novell off of all these computers, we're just about done with that process. Um, we're, got rid of the VAS, remember I was telling you that's when it caused us all to grieve with the computers, the updates? So now our new antivirus is gonna be Bitdefender. I'm doing a lot of re-imaging of PCs, and we've done the project lead-away labs, the art lab, um, working on business labs now, did the lab at the intermediate, so we're pretty much trying to get all these computers and update them. Um, we're having to switch over to Windows 10 as much as we can, because end of life for Windows 7 is in 2020, January. So now we're having to get that updated, and in that process, we start losing software that no longer works with the earlier versions. So that kind of ends up being a little bit of a process. And the other big thing we're doing is all kinds of summer projects, ready for the year. Any questions on that? You guys are busy.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the financial report with Kelly Gao.
I should stay here.
That's all right. I can see you.
Okay. Um, as you can see in my graph, we're still trending, I mean, exactly like last year, our line's a little higher, because I think our balances are a little higher than they were last year at the same point in time. Um, I've taken bond funds out of there, see my little note, so that it's comparable, because you put that bond in there and it makes it look funny, so, um, if you can go down to the next one, if you want. And, yes. Um, here's our, like, broad view financials, our revenues and expenditures, and you can see off to the right, um, where we're at spending-wise, the percent of budget, we're right on track with where we were last year on both revenues and expenditures, so, um, nothing unexpected, it's all going how we want it to. Um, as far as revenue, everything's coming in, I got my final state payment today, so that all came in real good with how I had it budgeted. Um, expenditures, we're making, we're making all of our final payments in the business office, making sure we get everything closed down and paid for in the correct fiscal year before we start up July 1st. Um, in other news, our auditors were in June 11th, if you were at the budget meeting on Monday, I talked about that a little bit. Um, they did quite a bit of work for only being there one day, um, they did testing of accounts payable and payroll. Um, they test accounts payable by pulling the checks, making sure we have the proper supporting documentation and everything that we need to process a payment. Um, as far as payroll, they pull random paycheck stuff, they compare it to the, um, to the contracts and make sure that we're paying the right amounts, so that's good. Um, they also do random testing of our electronic payments, so they do physical checks, and then they do, um, like, our direct deposit files on both AP and payroll. Then they come in, they pull random months of our P-card, our purchase card, our credit card, and they, we don't know what they're gonna pull, we're just like, here they are, come get what you want, and look at them, and if they have any questions, they let us know. They didn't have any questions, so we have all the correct supporting documentation with those two. Um, they review all of our, any, and all of our new agreements, any leases, any new debt, um, they look through all the board minutes too, the executive session minutes, um, they prepare confirmations to send out to our banks and anybody that we're doing any financial business with, and I think everyone here will get an internal control type confirmation questionnaire, which I'm sure you're familiar with from year to year. Um, they also do some random testing of any journal entries that I might do through the year, just to make sure that the journal entries that happen are supposed to be happening. They look at our, our big insurance policies, property liability, um, treasury funds, stuff like that, so. They will be back mid-September to finish up their audit, um, after we close the fiscal year and can give them good firm numbers, so. Other than that, you have my budget to approve in new business, and the budget adjustments, and then paying bills to the end of month, so, that's it.
Thank you. All right, the last report comes from Mr. Marino regarding the facilities usage.
It's very simple. Uh, this report that the board asked for some years ago. We tried to just do calendar forms now, hopefully that helps. Everything you see in front of you is all of our outside groups that have used our facilities for these six or seven months, I can't remember what it is that are listed there, and we are, to date, as of now. If you have any questions on those groups, I can answer them, and if not, in six months, we'll get another report.
So is this form much less time-consuming to put together, is it just simply a?
This is, this is so easy compared to what we're doing, because in the past, what we do, Mrs. Petrie, is, uh, Gail would email all the secretaries and say, hey, I need to list one of your groups, you know? We created this Google Calendar, and everybody puts their stuff on the calendar, and we just print the calendar now. It takes maybe 10 minutes.
Okay. That's much better.
So it's, this is.
Very time.
This report isn't so convenient anymore.
Right. Well, I knew it was. Let me make it a little harder.
Yeah, please.
No. Any questions about this, uh, calendar, or the groups on the calendar? Everybody good?
Do you guys prefer it to be broken down by building like we did, or by month?
I kind of like the building.
I like the building. Okay, all right.
All right.
But I, I'm just wondering if we need to be seeing this as a board? I mean, what are y'all's thoughts?
You mean have access to the calendar?
Hmm?
You mean have rights to the calendar? Or look at it at all?
No.
Have the report.
Getting the report from Eddie, I mean.
Share the calendars.
I'm just wondering if it's something the board even finds necessary anymore.
Oh. That was kind of like my question, because it used to be a very time-consuming report to put together, but if it's just, you know.
Just to look at.
Few minutes, then.
It can give you an idea of who's in and out of the buildings.
It's kind of fun to see how they're used, as long as it's not time-consuming. 10 minutes I can handle, but the hours and hours of the other report to throw, a little bit ridiculous.
Give all the credit to Gail. Then again, she figured out the simple way because she was the one doing it, so.
Well, kudos to her.
That's the good thing.
That's why she's there.
That's right. That's right. We know who really runs the department.
Yes, we do.
I'm on record as admitting it.
Let's turn the camera your direction.
She's going to watch this.
That's great. Good presence from now on, Eddie.
Call it out by me. Okay, that concludes all of our reports. There is, uh, as far as I'm aware, there is, uh, no unfinished business. Is that correct? Okay, so we'll move on to new business. And we amended the agenda in the opening session before, and we added, um, the construction change orders as our A1 or 1A or whatever we want to call it. But we need to consider, um, those changes that were brought to us this evening earlier during the reports. So I'd like to make a motion, or have a motion made, to approve these construction change orders that were submitted.
I move to approve this presented.
Second? Second Jane.
I have a question.
Okay.
Are you agreeing those would be optional included?
Mm-hmm. Okay. If we, she said as presented, so that would be all, all the changes.
Roy is watching our budget.
So that's almost $200,000 worth of changes. Are there any concerns about those changes? Any, this is your time to talk about them. Everybody's okay? Are we sure we're okay? Okay. All right, then, um, all in favor of approving the construction change orders? Raise your hand, please. All right, a motion carries then. So, there you go. There we go. All right, so we'll move on to the budget. You were given the booklet. We had our budget meeting and, um, discussed at great length. So we need a motion to approve the 2018-19 preliminary budget as presented.
Make a motion.
Thank you, John. Second. And, uh, Beth. Any other questions for Kelly? Since you've had time to sleep on it and think about it and use it as bedtime reading. I know. Everybody good?
Good.
All right, so let's, um, vote then, all in favor of approving this budget as presented. Very good. Okay, then we're moving on to the end-of-year budget adjustments and transfer resolutions. So we need to give authorization to our CFO to proceed with making annual adjusting entries as needed and resolve to authorize fund transfers as detailed in information received. That was pretty...
Make a motion.
Detail, okay. I have Angie and Beth. So we're giving, we're giving Kelly the authorization to make the changes and updates that she needs and add to our payout tax. Any questions? All right, all in favor of approving the budget adjustments and the transfer resolution? Very good. Okay, the next item has to do with, um, our monthly meetings, setting the, the calendar. Will these be on the Google Calendar, too, Eddie? Will we?
I'm putting them on right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Were there any meetings that were going to be a conflict?
We need to change the September 27th because most, several of us will be at, um, MSBA conference during that time.
Okay. So the suggestion is to go where?
Um, well, I have to go either earlier in the week or the week before, whichever.
This is September 27th? So the 20th?
Week.
Would be the week before?
Mrs. Gaines, is that them talking about the bills?
I can make that.
Okay.
I won't have a lot of, I won't have stuff from the state, you know, just current, like, update of plans, but I won't have that.
So could we move it to the Tuesday?
25th.
Would that make it easier?
The 25th.
Is that... Good with anybody, everybody else?
I don't have any issue with that. Okay, so we'll need to make that adjustment, then, that change.
Um, just considering the right, we're sitting here this week because everybody was out the next week. We have June 27th on this one for 2019. Should we change it now or wait till we get to it?
I think we could probably wait to see. You never know. But there were adjustments made for the holidays and the election, so. Okay, can I have a motion then to approve the meeting dates for the 2018 and 19 Board of Education? As amended. Thank you, John. Any other thoughts or concerns that we would have? Okay, and Beth Ann, you'll give us any... I appreciated last year the...
Yes.
The little ones that was laminated that I could put on my bookboard and took a picture of it, put it on my phone. So, thank you very much. All right, all in favor of the amended dates for next school year? Thank you very much, motion carries. Looking at approval of the payment of bills through June 30 of 2018, this would authorize Kelly to make those necessary, necessary payments. I have a motion. Thank you, Beth.
Second.
And Angie. Any questions about that or discussion? This is the end of the fiscal year for this school district, so she needs to close things out. We should have. Okay, all in favor of giving Kelly that authorization? Very good. Okay, next item has to do with the Technology's curriculum. Um, I know the Curriculum Committee for Technology worked very hard on this, spent several hours and met four or five times during the school year. Um, I'd like to have a motion to approve that the Technology curriculum as presented, if I could talk, it'd be helpful. Second Jane and second Beth. Any questions or discussion?
Well, I, uh, I sent this curriculum out to a friend of mine who works for Microsoft. Well, had worked, he's retired now at 40s, but, um, he was a, yeah, working, he was a senior, uh, software engineer, and so I said, hey, you know, you got the time, look it over if you can. He had some concerns. I sent Kathy some, uh, a copy of his concerns. He basically, I can pass out the email to you guys, just so you can take a look at it. But he, he's basically looking at the, uh, the, well, I, I sent him a copy of the email. Didn't make it through, sorry.
Okay.
Um, he was given some, some broader-based critiques early on that were probably a little more dense, but he did bring up a couple of specific things. And one in particular, it's on the half-page on the back there where he talks about the standard for, um, students avoiding online dangers and predators. He was a little worried that they have the proficiency level at grade 11. You know, they introduce it early, but since predators target young kids, a lot of times not juniors in high school, um, that was a good point, I thought he made there in particular. That's standard, uh, let's see. That was...
Standard two?
It's two, yeah, it was standard two.
Am I okay to adjust that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, fine, and I, I actually wanted to...
I don't, we want to do it one by one, kind of.
Get your feedback.
Okay, the one thing on, on that one that, you know, I looked at that and I, the big thing is, prior to that, we're reinforcing. And reinforcing, we're offering resources, materials, all during that time. It doesn't mean someone's not proficient, it's just that we're following up and we're giving them more material constantly. And then at 11th grade, we're hoping that at that point, they don't need those additional resources, but it doesn't necessarily mean they're not proficient. It just means we keep wanting to build a calendar.
Okay, I, I just...
They should have that skill by grade 11.
And they should, and I think maturity plays a little bit into that, too. I mean, but to be fair, you know, we have adults who aren't probably proficient at either.
True, true, but I mean, these are the standard, this is our expectation.
Correct.
You know, whether or not they actually achieve it.
Yeah, that's why I use more reinforcement.
I wonder, because we have expectations that are much sooner on some of these other things.
Yeah. Reinforcement is just providing more materials. We, we want to make sure they know more information, so every year we offer more information.
I guess my question is, is why grade 11 then? I guess, where, where was that?
Maturity, it was an age thing. And the committee, it was a group of teachers, it was all the high school teachers that got together, and they were the ones that said, we feel at this age level, it's more appropriate, that they probably don't need that reinforcement as much.
But we introduce our students to online security, very young, first grade.
Well, yeah, yeah, they have it, like, first, first, second grade, I guess.
But I, I, having young ones in the home, you know, elementary, primary age, I have to continue to reinforce and remind and, you know, as the technology changes in our home, teach, so I'm going to consider them proficient in third and first grade, you know, even my, my senior isn't proficient. He clicks buttons, it's like, what have you done? So, I mean, there is a maturity level there, too, because the technology, they, they only know what they're exposed to, they're not going to be exposed to some technology until they're much older, too. I can see that.
Well, and that's something, you know, even as an adult, we're always learning, hearing new things to do to...
Sure, but when we make these standards, you know, we are saying this is the age at which we want, for the reason we...
Did we make the standard?
We did.
Okay.
The, the standards for this, these standards, but what we did is we made our objectives below that and said, these are the areas underneath it that we want to focus on.
Okay. Because Jesse gives us some and then we, we expanded on them.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I understand what you mean by that on the proficient part. Quite honestly, you probably should have put reinforce on all of it, I mean, instead of proficient.
It should be ongoing, probably.
Yeah, because even on 11th and 12th, you can offer materials and resources, too.
Awesome.
Okay.
I should probably be...
Right.
I still need help.
I stopped replying to the, you know, I got billions from overseas, baby, Gail. I stopped replying to them finally.
Did you have other issues, John?
Yeah, there, there were more than a few, but, uh, I, I don't want to just hang up everyone's time on all this, just, um...
Well, have you sat down and talked with Kelly?
No, and that's what I really, because I just got this stuff, you know, he, he got back to me just Monday.
I see.
And so it's been a very short window.
So maybe the two of you could find a time...
If it's possible that we could just talk over it, because I don't want to take everyone's time discussing it.
That's a great idea.
So maybe after the meeting, you guys...
Yeah.
...do that? Okay, great.
Or set it down.
And if, if you guys come up with something else that we, you know, amended, we can amend it later, okay?
That'd be great.
Will that work?
Yeah.
Okay. Because it's not like we're going to do this tomorrow. We have a few weeks. Okay, so, we still have a motion on the floor to, um, approve the Technology curriculum as presented right now, and then if there's changes later, we can do that, okay? Anybody else? Are we ready to vote? All in favor of approving the Technology curriculum? Raise your hand, please. And all opposed? You're going to abstain? Okay. Thank you very much. Next item has to do with approving the student handbooks. And, uh, you had all those copies, there were some more, uh, really good bedtime reading.
Yes.
It was quite fun and entertaining.
We had more than a month to do it, though.
Yes, that's true. Okay, let's make the motion first, please, to approve these hand, the student handbooks. Some...
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion about, uh, the handbooks and the new items that were highlighted?
I have to bring it up again, I'm probably going to do it every time, but we are recommended not to approve the handbooks as a board by Missouri School Board Association.
But, you want to explain Selinda's point of view, or...
I know, I know what she says. I'm just bringing it up again.
When it comes to having to defend any type of expulsion hearing, this is another layer that they can use as part of the evidentiary hearing, that a student knew what the handbook was, whereas they might say, we don't know what board policy was. But we have a handbook that's approved, that they should have, could have, uh, in times past, they signed off on, they received copies of the handbooks, um, so it's your attorney's recommendation. So the board can do what they want.
And she says that she's the one that has to defend, you know, our district, not MSBA.
Why does the MSBA recommend it?
I think it's as a, as a liability kind of protective factor so that we haven't approved it if somebody...
MSBA doesn't recommend it because nothing supersedes board policy. Their stance is, handbooks are a procedure at the building level and nothing can supersede board policy.
Which...
And then when you get into an expulsion hearing, your attorney uses this. So she likes for it to be approved by the board.
Any other comments?
Well, my question always is to the admin, if there's nothing in here that you're not willing to support?
No.
Because that's the bottom line.
We went through the fine-toothed column.
The implementation and accountability of all.
And I believe we added the page that the patron asked for us to put in?
Yes.
Suicide hotlines?
Beginning about suicide and depression and has resources there for them. That, that information, the hotlines and, two hotlines and one warm line will also be on the backs of the identification purge for the junior high and high school students.
Oh, that's good. All right, so the motion is to approve, um, the student handbooks for all the buildings. All in favor of approving those? Raise your hand. All opposed? All right. Next, we have some policies that needed to be approved, and they were listed for you. Let's see, there's one, two, three, four, five of those. This is the final read on those. So, do you want to make the motion to approve all of them in one lump, or do you want to do them individually?
About the concerns with KG?
Okay, we can address those when we...
For those addressed, or...
Which concerns?
Wasn't that the one with...
That's the one Mr. Marino sent the email on, community use of district facilities?
Well, shall we make the motion and then we can discuss it? Okay.
I move to...
Is it okay to lump them together and then we can talk about them individually as well?
That's a good idea. I move to approve policies IGBD, IKF, JHD, JHDF, and KG as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Okay. Oh. Is that huge? Well, we know he's awake.
Maybe that's why he's...
Okay, so we had some questions, uh, about policy KG. Um, it had to do with facilities usage.
And resource offices.
I don't remember if Eddie was here when that was discussed. He doesn't remember either?
Yeah, remember you sent the email on community use of district facilities? Uh, your concerns that you listed were number one, what about all the individuals that are in our different buildings that offer aerobics, bootcamps, et cetera, to employees? Uh, are they considered for profit? And would this then exclude them?
Correct.
Um, next, number two was, does this apply to the old baseball fields of the junior high? Would we be getting rid of the application process and create a free-for-all, quote-unquote? Three, I've attached our application, do we remove for-profit groups altogether? Correct. I do remember this now.
Well, I could tell there was something...
I was reading it here because I remember looking at it, and those were just some of the things off the top of my head that I came up with. You know, another concern, I had some, I, Dr. Freeman just told me something that makes sense to me now that, I guess we're locking our track now at 10 o'clock, and there are some community members that have been trying to access that, that haven't been able to, and they're just wondering what it changed. I didn't really feel we're locking our track at 10 o'clock.
At 10 o'clock at night?
Yeah. So, so with, with this policy here, those things that I sent were just things to think of, because I know that some of our lower-level buildings, I'm going to use the elementary as an example, they have, uh, different aerobics classes and fitness classes that, that people use. So would this then exclude them and is that something that we want to do?
Right.
I think my recommendation would be not to accept these revisions. If you read on page one, these are not required by law. I think you stay with the policy you have, work from there to determine as a board if you want to make these changes. Because ultimately, what it's trying to do is get people more, uh, aerobically involved, athletically involved, and use the school facilities as that, whether it be, you know, as an extension of YMCA, helping kids, just, uh, I mean, I think it's going to, the problem we have, uh, with our current... the problem we have with our current procedures is going to be completely thrown out the window with adoption of this policy.
It really worries me after last year, we had conversations about older kids hitting on the playgrounds and they're too big for that equipment, they're too heavy for that equipment. So if we leave those playgrounds open, I'm worried that they'll, we'll just go right back to abusing those as well. And Jennifer feels very strongly that we need to lock down our facility, as far as our athletic facility at 10:00 PM because she said otherwise, she's got people down there all night long and she doesn't know what they're doing. And she's got to, you know, monitor the entire district, not just the high school.
Jennifer Resource Officer.
Correct.
The security.
My memory serves though with that.
Too early, 10 o'clock.
I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't.
10 o'clock, I think is kind of late.
She said it would be really dark by then.
The only question is, what time are we unlocking at then in the morning? Because you have people that'll come as early as four, six o'clock in the morning to start working. And we do have security lights out there that light up the entire field for getting to more.
I told her that we have a lot of adults that walk after 10:00 PM. I do know that for sure, in fact, I've been one of them.
Well, isn't there a, a circle that goes around the perimeter of the track?
But you have to get through the gates to get to that.
My memory serves about the playground, are you talking about the one that by grant money had to be provided, open to the community?
Yeah, but we had some kids up there, so we put the kibosh on that.
They were breaking equipment. But didn't the grant force you to leave it open?
It said it'd be, I think, accessible by the community, but not 24/7.
Right.
Well, the thing is, the player has an age limit on it, so you've got, if it's for kids up to 12 years old and you've got adults and high school kids over there, multiple kids swinging one of it, it's wearing the equipment out. And so then it's not going to be there for our kids to use.
And so we're, we saw older students using it late at night?
During a football game, during football games, they were going up there in groups of, you know, three, four, five, and they were unsupervised and they were too old to be on that equipment.
So what are the hours for the primary?
I don't know that.
It's open, so.
We've just made it very well known to our kids that they're not supposed to be getting on that equipment.
So it's still open 24 hours?
So what's the liability issue if someone gets hurt off hours on school property?
It depends upon whether it was due to faulty equipment or their own negligence.
Okay, that was.
Okay, so, policy KG. We may need to pull this from the group then.
I would just go with what you have, I wouldn't change it.
Okay.
If you want to change it, I think you can give a little more in-depth.
I would say with policy.
So do you want to amend your.
Yes, I do.
Motion.
Comparison.
And who did the second? Are you willing to amend this one? Okay, so the motion then is to approve policies IGVD, IKF, JHD, JHDF. We will be voting on those only at the moment. Any discussion on those policies? Okay, all in favor of approving that list, raise your hand, please. Okay, thank you. So, that leaves this policy KG. Is that something, are we sending it back to the committee to discuss? Or do we just want to decide now not to accept? Because I guess it has to be.
Can we just decide to stick with.
To maintain KG.
Maintain our policy.
Okay. So I, I need a motion then to.
Reject.
Continue following KG as we are currently or something to that effect.
As it is written currently.
Yeah, and I'm trying to do it positive. Is this something we'll want to revisit later to make as, as things pop up? I don't know.
Maybe. You know, right now with the way that we have our application process and we can tell who's using. Like for instance, we had an incident two weeks ago, Doc. But we knew exactly who was using the facility because of the application that we had on file. And we were able to contact those individuals and kind of talk with them and then walk through some things that we wanted them to do while we had some other stuff going on.
Right, it was during the construction project, correct Eddie?
Yeah.
Car, go through the grate and knock the.
Oil pan out of the car.
The district had to replace the oil pan because the grate had cracked due to the weight of the equipment and that was a big issue. I think it was $362 to replace the oil pan on the car.
Yeah.
Then we talked to everyone using the facility, told them to.
We just, I called everyone that is using the back junior high facilities. I said, hey, we don't, we want you to be able to use the facilities, however, please stay away from the construction zones, out of the zone, you know, all that. And they all, hey, absolutely, we understand. And I think knowing who's back there is a huge advantage to us.
Sure.
As opposed to the, like I said, the, you know, the free-for-all where, where. And the other part of that is, those people that have the application on file, the fellow people are trying to come and use it, they can say, no, we filled out the paperwork. Whereas you could have people getting into arguments back there, going, no, we were here first or no, you know. I mean, we have a pretty simple process that is working. If it weren't working, then I would say, consider this, but it works, so why mess with it?
Right. So it's big changes as soon as it, when it.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion to continue with the policy that we already have. Any other thoughts? All right, all in favor then of sticking with the KG policy we are currently using, raise your hand, please. Okay. Kathy Ringo has a recommendation for the board about approving, authorizing some or purchase of Chromebooks. Is that correct?
Yes.
Did we get, we were given a, a piece of paper, I think, when you came in for that. Have to think about that a minute.
I need to approve the recommendation to purchase of 266 Chromebooks from Staples.
For the elementary, intermediate, junior high, high school, and juvenile detention for all of those groups. Right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, so it's from Staples and they were the most conservative, but they've been. And it's kind of like, one's not better than the other in one place. And this is coming from Technology's budget, correct?
It's split up. Every building, I, I kind of broke it down, some's from the elementary and the mid, junior high, each building had some and then I also.
Okay. So they're all sharing?
I think it was one year, right? Yep.
That's kind of what all of them.
And the Missouri Tech group is kind of the techie group of, it's like you guys belong to.
Okay.
That's where we ask all of our questions.
Get your reviews from, yes.
Any other thoughts?
Wouldn't you ask with me?
All right, so.
Go ahead.
My, my only question is, does it make more sense to purchase or lease in this situation?
Well, we're on a lease right now and we're at, our lease comes out July 2019, so.
No, we'll make the last thing.
2018, yeah. So I kind of wrote that on here, 2018. And that was, how many Chromebooks was that Kelly, like 1,200? Because I had two different conflicting numbers, but I thought it was like 1,200. But just so you know, when that comes up, those Chromebooks' end of life is June of 2020. So here we are, back again, this is just going to be like a never ending. But we're very close, I mean, the buildings are getting much better. We're already past one, for every one, one student, or one Chromebook, we have two students. So we're like 80% at elementary, high school's 80%, over 90% at intermediate and junior high. But then again, we're going to have to purchase again.
Right, where's the end of life on these?
On these particular ones?
How long would you expect these to be?
These, well, it's 2023. Yeah, and when we say end of life, that means when they quit supporting it, we try to get more life out of them. We try to get what we can out of them and usually we're pretty good about that, but it's, time will tell. We're not going to know that for sure.
But, once they, once they break down though, you don't really do anything to it.
Right, I mean, we are able to do some repairs and the guys are really pretty good on it, but when we get to that part, if Google doesn't support it anymore, that's where we're going to have a problem. They, they give you that end of life so that gets them out of it. If they choose not to support it, they can say, well, I told you, in 2020, we aren't going to support you anymore, so. Gives them an out, but as of now, there's still support all of it.
But we're, we're prepared for this, when this comes to end.
For the cycle.
Or to be picked back up again, money-wise?
Yeah, I mean, if we continue to allocate kind of what we've been paying on that lease.
Then.
I mean, would that be a problem? But I would hope that that's what we want to do. We're also getting into a position, we're going to need teacher computers replaced as well. We're already several years behind on our cycle and we had to get an intercom at the high school, so that kind of is throwing us off a little bit too. So we're not kind of moving on.
That money. Any other thoughts about these Chromebooks? The lease of these Chromebooks? Okay. The motion is to approve the recommendation to lease 266 Chromebooks. All in favor? All opposed? Abstaining, thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Next item has to do with the purchase of smart boards. Again, there is another handout for you.
I move to approve the purchase of 19 smart boards for, I presume that's $23,541 from Schiller's Audio Visual Group as presented.
Okay, thank you. Very specific, thank you. Any discussion, questions for Kathy Ringo?
No, this is coming out of our bond budget, right?
That is.
Any thoughts? Okay, all in favor of approving the purchase of 19 smart boards, raise your hand, please. Okay. Next item has to do with salary schedule increases and changes. We are approving, or what, they are asking us to approve those changes. Show the page, that's what I have to do. Just to improve the salary increases and changes as presented. We had pretty in-depth discussion on this in the past. Do I have a motion to?
Second.
Oh, move to second, pardon, thank you Renee. Any questions? We were adding in an increase of $250 to the base of the salary schedule, correct?
And there are some additional maintenance, HVAC works larger for competitive.
This is kind of just to make it even across the board?
To increase their salary in certain positions. Our bus driving mechanics, our starting salary was right in the $13 range, is moving that up significantly. In the future, we're going to have to hire a bus driving mechanic. We're not very competitive in salaries to get a qualified individual in that area. HVAC and electrician, some of our trade type positions that we have in the district, to save us money is, we need to pay that more appropriately.
Okay. Any questions? All right. All in favor of approving the 2018, 2019 salary schedule increases and changes, raise your hand. All right, motion carries. Okay, this next item is something we do every year to approve. Oh, I jumped ahead, sorry, I skipped it. Oh, it's not all.
I supposed to, do you care?
See, that one's different. One here.
This might be out of order, just grab your, grab the one that can hold it that says junior high dishwasher and you can pull it up there to where it needs to be.
The junior high dishwasher needs to be moved, that's what, what was the next one?
Oh, okay. Consider approval of junior high dishwasher bid. Is that what we're doing here?
Yes. So we have a bid from the Ford Hotel Supply Company to purchase a dishwasher for the junior high cafeteria for $26,705. That's a fancy dishwasher, but it's big.
I want one like that at my house.
Let's approve the motion first or get the motion taken care of, then we'll discuss. So we had a first by Beth, a second by.
I'll second.
Okay, Jay.
I did make the.
Okay, John, did you have something to add?
No, I just, it wasn't all the dishwasher was.
There's several parts to it.
It was, install was $9,765. That seemed really high.
But there's other parts too, right?
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, I mean, the dishwasher, the dishwasher was 15. And, you know, the, the dish table was $700, which, the table, $700.
Is this the only bid we had, I guess?
I have two. I sent three and we got two.
You have two bids?
They have to modify the table because right now they have, that used to be the old high school. So the machine is, you know, automatic, it's a tank. But then the new one, they have to modify the table to be able to feed the new.
That's why I think it's expensive.
Yeah, right.
And it's the labor, that's.
It is the labor, that, that is a lot. Plus they're going to haul away our old one. But we're going to keep our booster heater because those are about $8,000, because we just had one at the high school. And this dishwasher has a built-in booster heater, so we're going to keep it in case we have another area that needs.
Since you guys are there knocking things out, can you knock out this old dishwasher?
Sure.
I mean.
It's a bigger sledgehammer.
Yeah, I don't know.
That would be awesome.
You're already there.
Yeah.
I guess that can't really happen.
I don't know how to do it.
It's a double.
They're better at it.
They are, okay. Better than me, but.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions about the dishwasher?
What's the life, lifespan of this type of dishwasher?
It's not going to be 40 years probably, it'll probably, at least, probably 15, I would say, 15 years.
Is that how long we've had the other one, is it 40 years?
Yes.
Wow.
It's, it's a tank, it's, but we can't get parts for it anymore, so whenever, you know, they're trying to manipulate things to get it, we're going. Or, you know, they're waiting for something, so then we're using server of all, then the kids get upset because then it's not being, they're almost like.
What's the warranty on this? That's.
It's only a year.
Yeah, it says one year.
A year?
One year.
Oh my gosh.
Is that pretty standard though with all the bids or?
The real question is, is what's the expected life on this?
Probably like 15 years, I would say. I mean, the fact that we got 40 out of.
The last one? Are we getting the same model that we got for 40? I don't make that one.
Yeah, it better, it better be washed in a lot of.
Can I bring my dishes up?
Yeah.
And then it puts the dishes away too, right at the end, I'm serious.
I mean, we need a dishwasher, I don't want to be doing dishes. I know, that would be quite a bit of labor for our staff to do dishes.
It would. Well, they already do like trace the pans and stuff.
Pans, I mean.
I mean, you want them to be.
Kelly, do we have enough money in the budget for the dishwasher?
Sure. Where I asked all these questions.
Kelly's on board, if they've convinced Kelly, it's okay.
Because we really could pay a person to do that, I mean, that's more than.
Yeah.
I mean, if we pay, just kidding.
We'd be paying that, too, to work the shit.
Okay, let's get back to this. We've kind of lost focus. The motion is to approve this dishwasher for the junior high. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor of approving the purchase of a dishwasher from the Ford Hotel Supply Company? All right.
What color are we going to pick? I mean, I would go with, like, really red or something.
It needs to be yellow or blue.
Oh, yeah. With the fox in it.
We're going back to the teen camps.
Maybe some monogram on it?
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Maybe plated gold.
Um, now we're going to be discussing the teen camps for July 2018 through June 2019. We do that for the year, and that's something that's done every year, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So I have a motion to approve the high school student teen camps.
Any questions? Second.
Okay. So Angie, and then Beth. Any questions about the camps? Okay, all in favor of approving these student camps? All right? Very good. The next one has to do with allowing students to stay overnight for state competitions. So the motion is to approve the competitive opportunities for our state qualifying students or teens, which will include supervision for overnight travel and stay throughout the 2018 and 19 school year. Need a motion? Thank you, and Renee. Any discussion over that?
Will we be approving the costs each time separately for them to go?
It's budgeted. So in the pathologic budget, if you look at the detail in there, there's a thing, there's a line item called Misha travel. So we try to budget as much as we can. Now, we could have a really good year where we have a whole bunch of people qualify for state, and it's going to throw that budget out of whack. Or.
Like a archery team or something, I mean.
It's for Misha activities.
Misha sponsored stuff.
Misha sponsored activities.
And then if we don't have enough money budgeted, they have to pay for themselves?
No, we all have a budget. I mean, just being, right, Kelly? That's the only way to really.
Comes from something.
We define it. But that's one of those.
Dishwasher won't be blue.
Yeah.
No monogram.
Oh, wow.
That's one of those items, this is, I need to, we feel like we have a pretty good idea what it's going to be, but if you have an entire team qualifying, you're not talking about individuals staying, now you're talking about several rooms that you're going to have to take. And I welcome that problem, I really do.
Right, that's a good problem.
Yeah, it's a great problem.
We'll figure out a solution.
Absolutely.
I agree.
I'll do car wash fundraising if we need to.
Okay, so the motion is to approve these overnight stays for state, state-level competitions. All in favor? All right. Moving on, we are going to the milk bid.
Yes.
Something I, I look forward to that every year.
I love seeing how much chocolate is.
Okay, so, the motion is to approve the milk bid for the 2018-19 school year from Prairie Farms. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
What was the price difference from last year? Was there was?
No, it's the same.
They're the same, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same.
Okay.
They're really the only company that does, or, I try all the time, but.
It'll get to be competitive. But we got to have milk.
At least the price is flat.
Right. All right, all in favor of approving this milk bid? All right. And there's the dishwasher.
Yeah.
Okay, so, item O. This has to do with our superintendent search presentations. We set up a time for July 11th at 6:00 PM to have a special board meeting. But we need to discuss who we're going to invite to present.
I make a motion that we invite MSBA and HYA.
Okay, those were my top picks. Okay.
Second. We say HYA. HYA.
Correct. Okay, discussion on those two groups?
We're kind of discussing.
Right.
We did discuss it our last meeting.
Rob was not here, though, so I don't know if he had any questions.
And just kind of let everybody know that third, when the spring.
Springstead waters.
Springstead waters, we kind of threw out, because it really didn't have any local connections. Their rep would be in Kansas City, and it was kind of pricey.
And BJ was not local.
They were South Carolina or North Carolina.
And both of these two, the rep is in St. Louis. Dr. Canistro is with the HYA, and Dr. Underwood is with MSBA. Both of them are St. Louis, so.
Right. Okay, so the motion is then to invite MSBA and HYA to present on July 11th at 6:00 PM with the community invited to participate. Well, two are.
Two is a point.
Well, but they make for question and answer.
They can, yes, they can.
Participate.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Questions? Okay, all in favor of inviting those two teams? Raise your hand. All opposed? Upstaying? Thank you.
And before we go off of that, I did kind of make contact with them to make sure that they were available, which both of them are available. And we were going to ask them to bring a info flyer for admin, staff, public that would be available. And Beth Anne is, has the email address that, questions that we have after going through their proposal, if we would send them to Beth Anne, and she collectively will send them on Monday to the two reps that are going to be coming, so they'll have a chance to respond to those questions. And that night, as we talked, we will be able to ask other questions that might, you know, stem from that. So if you would, I would say by Monday, maybe if I already had questions, you know, send an email to Beth so that she can go there. The other question that I have, we kind of left it as July 11th, 6:00 PM. Do you want me to contact them to stagger those?
One at 6:00, one at 6:30.
Okay. And you want to start at 6:00 on the dot? You want to say 6:15? Just because we have to prove the agenda and all that kind of thing? Because I think in our conversation on Monday, we were going to go with like a 15 to 20-minute presentation from them and give them another, you know, 10 minutes or so for questions and answers.
Take a break in between you and.
Take a break in between.
Collect and set up and whatnot.
I don't have. We didn't talk about that the other night.
Probably don't need 15 minutes to prove the agenda, do we?
No, I wouldn't think so, but.
You'd be 6:05 or something.
Yeah, I think we could still start at 6:00.
And then first one at 6:00 and the other one at 6:45? It is open meeting, open session for everybody.
I think 6:30.
Okay.
Because you don't know how many questions you're going to have anyway.
You know, if they have to wait a little while, I'm sure.
Not a good deal. Okay. So I'll do one. Do you have a preference as to which one, or just whichever one I have to call first?
I don't care.
Do you want me to do the same thing?
No.
So 6:00?
Throw them out of a hat.
And then 6:30? Okay.
You don't have a hat? I'm sorry.
But both, both, we're very excited to come and have that opportunity.
Good.
For a face-to-face with us.
Okay.
And if all of you can be on.
That concludes then this portion of the open session. So we do have some things to finish in executive session, so we will recess. I have a motion to recess. On the finger. Okay, we'll take a short break and reconvene with executive shortly.